I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Urbana City Council. This will be followed by the regular committee of the whole meeting. Like to remind folks to mute, please. Thank you. It's Monday, January 3rd, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marley?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meetings of December 13th, 2021, and the city council goal-setting session on December 15th, 2021. Is there a motion for approval?
Some of.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, second by Sharice. Are there any substantive corrections? Grace?
Uh, thanks. I was wondering about for the December 15th goal-setting meeting. I saw there's a draft of some of the strategic goals that's attached, but it looks like that's not the most recent version. So I was just checking if it would make sense to add the most recent version there.
Is this something I can respond to?
Yes.
So the thought was that that was the handout that you were provided with to facilitate the discussions for that meeting? And that the completed version, which was submitted to the clerk's office following the completion of that meeting, will be included with the minutes for the next council goal-setting session? Is that will be the document that you start that meeting with?
And then the final ones will just be published in and of themselves?
Yes.
Yes, and the final ones will actually be brought to the council for approval. So that will be a separate action as well.
Okay, thank you.
Right, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Tonight, we have one presentation, and that will be followed by public input. The presentation's on a summary of the city's snow and ice control operational plan for 2021, 22. And we have Public Works represented by Vince Gustafson. Go ahead, Vince.
Good evening. I'm Vince Gustafson, the Deputy Director for Operations here at Urbana Public Works. While we've had a very mild December, it looks like January winter has finally set in. So I just want to take a brief opportunity just to kind of give an informational update on how we here at Public Works, the operations divisions, deal with snow and ice on a seasonal basis. I'm going to see if I get my screen share here. See if I'm able to see that? Great. Um, so one thing that I can say in my 18 years of experience here at Public Works, from driving snowplows to supervising shifts to now managing the division, is that no one event's ever the same. There are so many different variables that go into how we deal with any particular event. Um, it's important, though, that we have a kind of a set of guidelines that we base those decisions on. So that's what I'm kind of going to go over tonight is just the general, general rules that we take into consideration and ideas and thoughts when we go to figure out how we're going to tackle any particular event. Primarily, obviously, weather is the main determining factor. A lot of this can depend upon timing, the wind, um, temperature, whether it's freezing rain, sleet, ice, snow. Um, generally speaking, when we deal with events of less than two inches of snow accumulation, we're able to handle that just by a chemical abatement. That's either road salt, road salt with a brine solution. And then when temperatures drop below 20 degrees, we'll apply a calcium chloride additive to the road salt. Um, that allows us to melt the snow and ice at a much lower temperature. Um, generally, we'll only lower our plows and push snow when the accumulation exceeds two, two inches. Um, when we look at how we get started on the beginning of any event, we do have a prioritization to all the streets in Urbana, starting with our primary and secondary routes, which are the high-volume arterial routes. Um, then we move into the downtown and Phyllo Road Business Districts and parking lots. And then we'll move on to our residential areas. This map here outlines our four primary snow routes. When we're just doing a treatment, like we did over the weekend, we'll assign one route per truck. However, when we're actually plowing snow, we'll, we'll put two trucks together working in tandem. That helps us get to turn lanes and it's much more efficient getting through these major primary routes. After the primaries, we'll move in to the secondary routes. Uh, these include a lot of our frontage roads, Airport Road, Behringer Commons, and on the south end, some of our, our higher-volume streets on the south end and then through Stone Creek. The reasoning behind how we have these particular streets laid out generally is so that when we've completed treating or plowing our primary secondary routes, anyone in Urbana should be approximately three blocks from a cleared street. A few major routes that you probably won't see on these maps are Route 130, 150, um, University Avenue, then Cunningham and 45 north of Five Points, um, I-74 and the Interstate Ramps. These are all maintained by IDOT, even though they're technically within the city limits. Um, we also here at Public Works do not maintain the Edgewood, Scottswood, or Yankee Ridge subdivisions. Those are managed by the townships. So occasionally, we'll get some calls on these, but we refer them to those, to those agencies. Our residential areas, once we've finished up our major arterials, will slowly break our trucks off into the 16 residential zones. Um, and we do rotate these on a yearly basis. So at the beginning of the year, we'll take the top two residential zones on the list, and we'll move them down to the bottom. So that, that helps us keep it on a fair basis on, on which areas we start in. Um, our maps, we do have for our operators. We break out the dead-end streets and the cul-de-sacs. Um, we like to use our, our equipment, generally our circulating front-end loaders with plows to take care of these areas, um, just because they're a lot more maneuverable. It's a lot easier for them to get in and work around the cul-de-sacs and work around cars. It's much more, um, it's, it's much safer and much more efficient for us to get in. So sometimes we'll get calls, I saw a plow truck drive by my street or drive by my cul-de-sac. Um, that's why we'll, we'll send a, we'll send a loader crew out there with a smaller stall truck behind them to take care of these areas. Um, by policy, residential alleys that require access are only plowed after five inches of snow. Another common call that we get is regarding snow at the end of driveways, especially in the residential areas. Um, it's very important for us to make sure that we get all the snow all the way back to the curb line. And oftentimes, this'll take a pass or two. So someone will say, why did I see a snowplow come two or three times around my street? Well, that's to make sure that we get it all the way back to the curb line so that when the, when it does start to melt, it ensures that that melting snow will get down to the inlets and won't refreeze in the evening. So I, I know it's frustrating that after you've cleared your driveway, you see the truck come back in and plow back in. It is, it is essential that, that we do that. We, we try our best to be as efficient as we can as how we go through the neighborhoods. Um, once again, as a, as a guideline, now that is very conditional based upon, you know, if it's very windy and we're dealing with drifting. But we like to think, we, we set a goal for that once the last snowflake has fallen and the event has stopped, um, we like to think that we can at least make a pass through all of our residential streets in Urbana within 24 hours after the end of the snowstorm. If we've got to dedicate extra trucks to the outskirts dealing with blowing and drifting, or if we have some staffing or equipment issues, sometimes it may take a little longer. But that's generally what we try to strive for. This map here is basically shows how we have the 16 areas mapped out. Um, you can also see on here that we've got our South Business District, Central Business District, and Campus. So that once we've finished our primary, secondary routes, or even sometimes when they're in process, we'll assign our, our loaders and our smaller trucks to try to get into these areas as soon as we can. Regarding sidewalks, um, the Public Works Department, we're responsible for removing snow and ice from sidewalks adjacent to city-owned buildings and property. Um, the sidewalks that are adjacent to private property are the responsibility of the property owner. So the council did pass an updated ordinance in 2019 that requires property owners within certain identified districts to remove the snow adjacent to their, to their buildings and their, and their residences. Um, we'll make the declaration of when that, when that takes place over two inches of snow. Um, and that clearance must occur within 24 hours. Those areas are defined as the University District, the South Phyllo District, and there's a Downtown District. Um, the city website has a great FAQ page, um, that can really dive into this and also has those clearly outlined areas, um, in those three districts. Um, if you Google "Urbana sidewalks, snow removal", it's a great resource for people who have questions about where exactly and how exactly that particular program works. Um, then I'd point out that the enforcement of that is taken care of by code-compliant staff in the Community Development Department. So regarding the resources we have to take care of, take care of all of this, um, staffing is solely based upon the weather conditions and, and the severity of the event. Um, I'll, I'll use this weekend as an example, where we just have a light, a light dusting, a little bit of freezing rain that's kind of quick in and out. Um, we called in a crew of six at midnight with a supervisor. And within about six or seven hours, we're able to get through all the primary, secondary residential areas and lots and get everything treated, um, and, and be out by, everybody was out by seven o'clock in the morning. So those, those shifts are pretty quick. However, when we have larger, larger snow events, um, while we're plowing, um, that require us to stay on continuously, we'll shift to, um, 12-hour rotating shifts. And those go from 11 to 11, um, until basically we're done and the event is, event is, is over. I'd like to point out, too, that while a lot of other agencies rely upon outside labor, or snowbirds, as they like to call them, bring them in to, uh, perform the, to perform the work, we here at Public Works utilize all of our full-time Aspen Union, um, Public Works employees. So our building maintenance technicians, our electricians, our parking meter technicians, um, are all trained, um, upon employment to, to get their CDL, to learn how to operate the equipment safely, and are trained here in-house to, uh, perform this work. So when the snow falls and the ice comes, we essentially put all of our nonessential work on hold, and all of our priorities are put towards, put towards snow removal. And then likewise, when the event is over, we have to come back and pick up everything that was put on hold while we were busy taking care of this work. So we have here in-house three full-time mechanics and a fleet supervisor. Their work, um, in regards to equipment preparation starts in September. Um, we've had snow as early as Halloween before. Um, so they do a great job of getting everything prepped, ready, calibrated for us to go for our first event. And then obviously, they've got to balance all the work it takes to keep the fleet up and running throughout winter with, um, just the regular, um, work they do with managing, you know, police and fire apparatus and the rest of the city pool here. It's about 23 pieces of snow equipment, including the six new plow trucks you see here that were acquired last year. Some couple one tons, several end loaders, backhoes, a bunch of miscellaneous small equipment to maintain about 300 lane miles of roadway altogether in Urbana. Um, we do maintain a contract with an outside, with an outside company um, to assist us with parking lots. So when we do get over two inches of snow, and if all of our forces are dedicated to keeping the roadways and, and the sidewalks clear, we will call them in on occasion just to assist with making sure that the lots are cleared, um, or the city properties. And we do plow the Lincoln Square parking lot as well, too. We have a budget of about $140,000 for materials, equipment, and contractual needs. The majority of that does go to our annual road salt procurement. Then we budget about $140,000 for overtime and standby pay, although we generally don't use that much and it is there available on the event that we do need it. Particular challenges for this year? Um, we currently have four of our budgeted positions that would typically be full-time snowplowers are vacant. Plus, we do have a supervisory position vacant, so we are working towards, um, filling those. As with everything these days, COVID-19 remains an unknown. It seems like recently, we've had a pretty, um, substantial uptick in exposures and positive cases. At this time, we're, we're currently have a few employees out related to that. Hopefully, expecting them back in the next few days before we have any significant snow in the forecast, but it does always linger in the back of our mind in terms of keeping our snow readiness in place. Also, we've had some initial concerns with, I know we've all seen on the news, the supply chain issues in getting parts and equipment. Um, vendors have the same staffing concerns and supply issues that, that we have here. Um, I can say at this time, all our equipment is up and ready. We have everything we need, but we've got to stay in good communication with our, the folks who provide us the cutting-edge for our plow blades and parts and equipment for our truck, making sure that trucks, that they have what we need on hand to deal with anything. But at this time, it seems like we're, we're sitting pretty good. There was a slight delay with the state's procurement of road salt. We piggyback with the majority of the municipalities and agencies in the state of Illinois on that procurement. It was a little later this year, but it did finalize, and we did have our, um, 1,400-ton allotment has been delivered and is now in the shed and ready for use. So hopefully, that won't be an issue for us this year. Um, just like to point out that it's a lot of, a lot of late nights. We've been lucky this year, but I can guarantee you that by March, we're generally pretty worn out from late nights and the weekends. And I, previous years, it seems like the snow always, always falls on a Friday afternoon just when the weekend hits. And we've had a lot of times where you go a long month without a, without a break. So a big thanks to, to my supervisors and the staff and the mechanics and everybody here who do a job, good job of making sure that we get everything taken care of when, when we need to get out there and get it done. So just pointed there are any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Questions for Vince? Grace?
Yeah, uh, thanks for part of the presentation. Um, some of my questions were about sidewalks. I've been hearing about the ones on Phyllo Road in the past, and I see that's one of the required clearing districts. Is my understanding is you said more than two inches, and that's enforced by community development? And it was, I, I quickly found their website, um, or the city website, where it says more information about that. Thanks for pointing people to those frequently asked questions and some of the maps. Um, and then I've also saw a sign around the neighborhood about, um, the courtesy for clearing sidewalks with a group about the U Safe Routes to School project. Um, I don't know if you could add any more about that and kind of what areas are required and what areas are still courteous and neighborly to clear sidewalks?
I have not been directly involved in the, the CU Safe Routes to School other than the information that's provided on the website. So I would, I'd recommend that, um, they contact directly with that group. If there's a hardship or a reason why folks are unable to, to take care of their areas, it looks like that might be a good resource, um, for them to reach out to. But like I said, uh, based upon the maps that are on the website, it, it clearly delineates what areas fall under, under the require, requirements for clearance. Um, so at that declaration, we'll notify, um, the folks over in Building Safety, and then they'll go out, they'll run those, and then they'll, they'll follow up with the property owners. And they have a contractor that'll help them clear those areas for them.
And you mean in the required areas or for outside of that area?
In, in the required areas. Outside, outside, outside those required areas, um, I would say it's really a, it's a responsibility of the property owner to, um, make those arrangements in advance. And I think then if there's a hardship beyond that, that's when they could, um, utilize that, the, the information that's on with the CU Safe Routes to School webpage.
Okay, so can I ask to clarify one more time? So outside of those required districts, property owners, it is the responsible, courteous, neighborly thing to do to hold the driveway property. But outside of those required districts, those required areas in town, it is not legally required, and there won't be a follow-up fine and stuff. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I do have another question, but I'll see.
Any other questions for Vince? I don't see any. Grace, did you have another question?
Um, another one that was brought up was about the new I-3 broadband wires potentially crossing on sidewalks and alleys. I had an email with some photos even. I did see some of this in our neighborhood. They weren't buried very much. At least in my neighborhood, it looks like they didn't cross the sidewalks and roads, but they were not buried very deep. But I don't know if you had anything to add about I-3 broadband wires that may be over sidewalks or alleyways?
I, I would say to have to really refer that to our, to our right-of-way team up in engineering. They're, they have the guidelines and the specifics that they're required to follow. And when they apply for that right-of-way permit, I would say definitely if it's anything less than a temporary, um, installation, that's not to put your mark, know that there shouldn't be anything crossing the sidewalks permanently.
Okay, so you said follow up with engineering on that?
Yeah, with our, with our right-of-way. Our Engineering Division, um, manages our right-of-way permits, which does the oversight on the construction standards, um, for the I-3 broadband installation. So if there's a specific concern, we can follow up with those directly. But generally speaking, there are standards by which they're supposed to follow that, that we do enforce via our right-of-way permit process.
Thanks for the work on that, because it's a, definitely an important one, keeping those roads clear. So thank you guys in your department for taking on that big task and communicating with us. I appreciate it, having the whole plan and all the maps laid out, and I think that helps clear it up. And then I guess my last question was if there's a good, um, number for people to reach if they have specific questions about snow routes or general public work operations?
Sure, sure thing. We have right here at the end of the slide, um, call the, the front office at 3842342. Um, I also have my email address on here directly. We'd be glad to provide any clarification or additional information on any given day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, just to confirm, Vince, I know as a council member, the calls I got referred to, what residential route am I in and where am I on the list? So from what I can tell, as I look through the manual, the, um, order in which residential areas are going to be plowed this season are on the page that's labeled "Snow Log Summary". Looks like a spreadsheet, but there's no page number on that, but you'll find it in your book. And then the overall map is the map labeled Residential Index. So the, uh, neighborhood sections are, um, are referenced in that, uh, residential index, and that's where people can see.
We, we do get that call quite a bit. Why, why are we always last? And I can assure you that we do, we do our best to, to follow that, to follow that order. It's not always 100%. If I have, if I have someone up on the north end of residential tent, obviously, I'm not going to make them drive all the way to the south into Stone Creek. We may divert them over to 16, um, just for the sake of efficiency. But as, as a general practice, we, that's the, that's the typical order that we try to follow just for, to keep, to keep it, um, equitable.
And the mess, the important message is that it's rotated every year. And people feel like they're always the last one. I can assure you, it always feels like your area is the last one, but it's not, so.
I, I don't think that's Snow Log Summary annually, and that's definitely part of our practice.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Vince about snow? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to public input. If you'd like to address this meeting of the council, please raise your hand. Uh, first up is Alan Axelrod.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All righty, I'll start when the clock's up. Thank you. So this afternoon, I sent the city council an email detailing that I had a conversation with a disabled activist in Missouri who enumerated that the police follow-up co-responder model is, in their opinion, in violation of Title II and V of the ADA, as well as one additional law pertaining to disability rights, particularly and interestingly, discrimination. I bring this to your attention not to lord this over. This was something I wasn't accounting for when I was talking to you about concerns about state statute. I would like to see some proactive analysis, disclosure, compliance from the city of Urbana. While I do have the bandwidth and will be appropriating it accordingly to proceed, I have told you in the email what that timetable would be. This provides the city of Urbana the ability to be prudent as this may involve litigation. I'm not a fan of the courts. I'm not a fan of litigating anything. But when disabled activists are asking you to do something, who am I to say no? I'm like, what is going on there? So on Thursday, I will be meeting with other disability rights activists and conferring with them. If they also agree with the, uh, disabled activists out of Missouri, uh, then we will be proceeding to contact departments and state governments as well as publicly funded legal, uh, entities. So that's, that there, again, like, this is avoidable. Now, um, the other thing is on the No Ameren Shut Off side, technically, within the scope of a public comment, I could play to you the latest video that we have released. However, you were live streaming on YouTube, and that risks a copyright strike, even though we interestingly used copyright-free music. Uh, there's just some idiosyncrasies there. One of the things that I would like to bring to, uh, folks' attention is the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act and the Winter Moratorium, not stopping utilities from shut-offs. So let's tackle the second one first as another city council had asked me today or had courageously asked earlier today about whether or not Ameren can shut off, uh, people in the winter. Yes, they can. The Public Utilities Act details that if it is above freezing and if the customer is not enrolled in a payment plan, which by the way, requires a down payment that they may not be able to afford, then yes, they can shut people off. This was the standard adopted in September of 2020, September 22nd of 2020. And nine weeks later, 81,000 households were disconnected. To provide a sense of scale, from July through November, 190,000 households have been disconnected. Any wonder that our COVID caseload is so high? Now, on the note of the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act, this is an opportunity for the city of Urbana to bring money from the federal government to help our residents. I had mentioned that I will be following up with an email, and I intend to do that follow-up. I mentioned the video for No Ameren Shut-Offs because that took some time and priority, given that we need to get the word out. And as generated, earns media coverage. I'll be doing an interview later tonight, interestingly. Anyway, have a good one.
Thank you. Uh, next to speak is Angel Johnson. Next to speak is Angel Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good evening. How are you all? And I have a New Years to everyone. So I'm calling in for one particular concern. The COVID nineteen has taken over. Then we have another variant on the earth. And then there's another variant. And every time it's getting worse and worse. Now, from my understanding, twenty-one thousand today in the state of Illinois. My Marlin has been affected. The cases are very high. We're off the chart. Urbana Middle School, Urbana High School has been tested for COVID with teachers and students. And for, for as I'm concerned, the schools need to be closed. They need to be shut down. Because this thing is very bad. Now, a lot of students that I know has been hospitalized. They didn't get to celebrate like, and some of the U of I students too that I work with that I know. They wasn't able to celebrate the holiday. They had, you know, came in contact with people with the COVID before the school break, which the school break knew. For Urbana Middle School and High School, I know for a fact that they had several cases there, but they're not closing the schools. And I wonder, Ms. Marlin, could you take into consideration of asking them to just close the schools down? Because several people had the COVID and they didn't close, but they let the children stay at the school. They let the teachers continually work. And it just spread. And so now it's very bad. And a lot of them are at home and couldn't even attend school, go back to school. So I think if we clear it up, because this thing is consuming, it's like, it's taking over. And there's not going to be a school or teachers if someone die continually. Or if someone maybe, you know what I'm saying, continually gets sick, we're not going to have school. If we close it down now. Then maybe we can do a preventive, like stop this thing from getting worse. Because our numbers are very high throughout the state of Illinois, unknown throughout Champaign-Urbana. I know you, you probably haven't had time or maybe you have to look at the numbers just today. All of the students got tested. Guess what? They're at home. They tested positive. So something is wrong and we don't have a cure. You know, if, if something's going on and we can do better. And if I can do anything, please let me know, Marlin. I'm not jumping on you. You're not God. You know, I'm in prayer too and hoping that God can stop this too. So I'm not putting this on you. This is not an attack, okay? This is not a statement that this is something you have to do. I'm asking of you, would you take this in consideration? But at the end of the day, it's your decision, but I stand with you. Okay, and thank you for doing a well job for two thousand twenty-one and we're going into twenty-two. And we're praying for you guys, okay? God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else wish to address the committee or the council? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Then we'll move on to council input and communications. And council members wish to make comments. You have up to three minutes. I do, Grace?
Thank you. Just want to say too, after we moved on to this section, we saw another hand. And just wanted to tell the public that to my understanding, we'll have another meeting starting soon. And there'll be another chance for public input at that time, again, tonight. For anyone who would wish to speak again or didn't get to speak this round. If you can stay a little longer, there'll be another opportunity. And again, want to thank the public for their input and Public Works for the presentation on snow removal. I agree with the concerns about COVID nineteen and want to reiterate that our cases are higher than they've ever been. And encourage and urge people to take precautions still whenever they can. Also interested in a general update whenever we can about the request for proposal for the community safety review. I just wanted to say here publicly that I think that we, we do need a comprehensive plan to address community safety. And I hope that we can get the ball moving on all aspects of that as soon as possible. And look into any immediate actions or support that we can take. And I'm also interested in learning more about the mental health response. And how we can enhance that kind of emergency mental health response. Whether we are in compliance with the law already or not. I think that that's important to work towards that direction and the spirit of it. And it seems a little bit. I don't know, like an issue in the system, a loophole to say, well, there's nothing available, so it doesn't apply to us. I think that the goal, in my opinion, would be working towards making alternative responses available. And I hope that that's something that we're working towards. That's all for now. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, I do have a couple of comments. One is to Pastor Johnson. I want to thank you for your concern. Addressing and responding to COVID has been our top priority for the past two years and it continues to be. These decisions regarding opening, closing schools and what happens in the school district are. Do lie with the superintendent and the Board of Education. And I know they work very closely, as do we, with the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District. And I do know that they were adding additional testing this week for students before school, after school. And I think that's, it's a very good step to take. But absolutely, we are, we are consumed with dealing with COVID. And here at the city, we all will be in discussions tomorrow about some steps that we can take in the short term to protect. Our employees further and the public. So stay tuned for, for possible temporary changes as we move forward this month. As far as our compliance with state law, as you, you received the memo this afternoon in response to concerns about the. Follow-up co-responder model, we are in compliance with state law. We, of course. And we intend to be. I'm not sure what Mr. Axelrod is talking about with regard to the ADA. But if there are issues, we will address those as well. But we absolutely, currently our model is in compliance. And as we said, it's a pilot, it's a beginning. And we intend to make this a success and see where it takes us. But this is a start for us. And so we want to make sure that we're successful in this way. Absolutely, we are complying with state law. Okay. Sharice?
Yes, I just wanted to. Read something into the, for the minutes. Homicide investigation on Wednesday, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. At eight oh three PM. I'll read it later.
Okay. Any other council comments? We will move on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any. Reports of the standing committees, Mary Alice.
All right, on behalf of the committee of the whole, we have two items on the consent agenda tonight. Ordinance number twenty twenty-one, twelve zero five five, and ordinance amending Schedule H of Section twenty-three ninety-three. For the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at certain intersections for Deer Ridge Drive at Mark Trail. Lexington Drive at Deer Ridge Drive. From Vernon Deer, sorry Vernon Drive at Deer Ridge Drive. Horizon Lane at Deer Ridge Drive. The second item is Resolution Number twenty twenty-one, twelve zero five one R. Resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for Goodwin Avenue. And Green Street Intersection Improvements. On behalf of the committee of the hall, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, second advised Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken? Ms. Bishop? Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. That's all the items on the consent agenda. There were none on the regular agenda. Any reports from special committees? Okay, reports, reports of Augusters. Do want to remind folks that Thursday, January sixth, will be the final meeting for the council to discuss. To finalize the city council goals. And then the plan would be to bring those to city council for final approval at, toward the end of the month. Looking ahead to January eighteenth is going to be the financial forecast. So that will provide a very useful information. It's going to be the basis for a number of decisions going forward. And then on January twenty-fourth, we will begin discussion of the American Rescue Plan allocations. And the process for that and the regional planning commission staff will be there for that meeting. So we are, we're making progress on several fronts there. We'll move on to new business and there is none. And then there is no business before the special meeting of the city councils, so we will stand adjourned.
Hold on just a second. I have a question.
Yeah.
On my agenda, it shows under consent agenda, Resolution twenty-two twenty-one, twelve oh fifty-one R.
Yes.
If we do that, because I only got one thing that you guys just talked about.
I believe Mary Alice read both of those.
Both of those? Okay, all right.
Yes.
Never mind.
Thank you for checking.
Okay.
And those were two items on the consent agenda. Thank you. Okay, no further business before this meeting. We stand adjourned and.